All right, 1.1, general function, call to order.
Call to order, trustee Broderick?
Present.
Trustee Bisinski?
Here.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski?
Here.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes, 1.3, review of February 1st, 2023 work notes. No motion. 2.0, college business. And I'm going to make this statement here before, to get Dr. Farmer rolling. I'm going to ask Dr. Farmer to facilitate this issue, this discussion, and I'm going to ask Karen to keep the time, the time limit. This is how this will work. Each board member will get 10 minutes to speak, if necessary, if necessary. I have, I hope we don't need any necessary. A second round of discussion will be limited to five minutes for each board member. Before we begin this process, I would like to ask you all, and ask you and say, I know we have strong concerns and opinions concerning Workday. And I am going to ask the board members to present your follow-up questions and concerns in a respectful and a civil manner, as I hope you all do. And Dr. Farmer, this is, you've got it now. You're on the floor.
All right, thank you so much, Chairman O'Connell. And once again, I want to thank you for asking me to facilitate this discussion regarding Workday. So I really want to echo, once again, your comments about upholding the core values of the institution, especially related to respect as we engage in this discussion. So each board member, once again, will have 10 minutes to ask your question, followed by a response by Jim Surr and also Jerome Gotlock. So yesterday, I did send an email to the board, and once again, thank you for sharing all your questions ahead of time prior to the board meeting. And so you should have all that documentation right in front of you. So if you want to reference the questions or the supporting documentation, you have that available. So at this time, I would like to start with the trustee Garcia-Gian, the secretary of the board. And then from there, we will move forward with trustee Mahalik, and then student trustee Stamboreski, and we'll work our way around, okay? So the floor is yours now, trustee Garcia-Gian.
Yes, perfect, thank you.
And Jim, and Jerome, could you come? Okay, very good, to the podium, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman O'Connell, Board of Trustee members, President Namul. Thank you, Dr. Farmer, for facilitating this evening, we appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you so much for being here. I do have several questions, but I do want to make sure that I stay focused on what we, oh, sorry, the timer hasn't started. I'm getting ahead of myself.
You're good.
Oh, you get extra minutes.
I'll wait.
Thank you for respecting the process, thank you.
Feel like I'm at a bowls game.
Okay, I think I'm good to start. Okay, again, thank you so much for being here and being part of the process and making sure that we understand, we get a reminder of what the process looked like, and trying to make sure that we know what happens next. So thank you for that. I think for me, it gave me a better perspective in terms of actually taking a pause and looking back at every single thing that happened along the way, the way that the process developed, everything that everyone contributed and was part of the process in order to get to this particular decision. So all of that, again, I acknowledge it, but at the end of the day, I do want to make sure that we know that we made a decision as a board, we decided to move forward. So now is, what are we going to do about it? So it's not really a question, more like a comment, but just trying to figure out, how do we take into account the burden, to an extent, for the employees and everyone on the, on the college that had to go through the whole process? Whenever you have a new system that you're implementing, there's always trial and error for a lot of things. And unfortunately, headaches and problem solving and troubleshooting with a lot of different things. So that is something that a lot of times comes with a particular system that we're trying to make sure that we get to a particular point in order to make it easier for us down the road. But again, in order to get to that point, it takes, it takes a lot of work. So again, I just want to make sure that we get clarity, and I think we have gotten next steps. So thank you for that, Dr. Namul, mainly just how do we move forward? And of course, thanking our wonderful team, but just how do we move forward and make it better? That's all I have, thank you.
So trustee-
Go ahead.
Yes, trustee Garcia, at this point, you don't have a question, but you had a statement?
Correct.
I just want to clarify.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate those comments, trustee Garcia, thank you.
Okay, trustee Mahalik, please.
Well, we had a bunch of questions answered in the email, and I do appreciate, I believe Maureen had abundance of them, and I do appreciate those. First of all, I just want to say sorry as a board member. I'm sorry to you guys, because if we put the key attribute to a new ERP system as money, we failed, you guys. The key attribute for a new ERP system should have been, our new software system should have been the success of our students, the success of our staff, ease and usability. That's just, that's just insane, and that was the key deciding factor, right? The cost?
So the, yeah, so the, we quantified the scoring matrix. Certainly, we divided all of the points that were accumulated by each of the final two vendors, and I'll let Jerome expand if necessary. But at the end of the day, when you considered functionality along with cost and the financial viability of the system, we came up with a total cost per point, which at the end of that process favored the selection of Workday.
But the ease and usability was, who, who was, what was the most preferred? Was it campus, Campus Works was the preferred choice by most of our employees and our staff and our students?
So based on that scoring, again, campus management did come out higher on the number of points accumulated based on functionality. And so when you considered the entire process, the best value method, which was one of the methods that Gartner recommended that the college used to score this in an objective fashion, we considered functionality along with cost to come up with that total cost per point, which again favored the selection of Workday. And the margin of that, of the 10-year cost was $3 million difference at the time.
Also, when we purchased new equipment, new, did we do anything new? Did you guys check references for other colleges that used it? I mean, which colleges did you check? And I mean, how did they score it? And did any of these issues that we're having now come up in the conversation at all?
That's a great question, trustee Mahalik. What I'll say on that point is, is yes, we had, the committee met with references for each of campus management and Workday. I'll say that at that time in the process, really from that functionality standpoint, I think the sentiment, not in, not only in the committee, but probably more broadly across the college, the sentiment at that time probably favored campus management. We had the meeting with Campus Management's Reference, which is a college in Arizona. That college that Campus Management put forward was one-third the size of Juilliard Junior College, one-third the size. I think their enrollment was in the, in the range of 3,000 to 3,500. Don't quote me on those numbers, but-
That was for Campus Management, you said?
For Campus Management's Reference. And so we had a very good discussion with that reference amongst the committee, and I believe that Central Arizona had just gone live with, with HR and finance functionality at the time. And we experienced a staff at Central Arizona that was, was very exhausted. They were very frustrated by the implementation of Campus Management at that time. Again, I think they were very much on the heels of their implementation, and so that was probably part of the emotions that they were going through at that time as part of their implementation as well. But I think, the reason why I say that in answering your question is that I do think that that experience with that reference for Campus Management did change the minds of some folks on the committee based on that reference call.
And then, did you, you had, for Workday, you did have references for them too?
We did, we met with Indian River State College as part of the Workday reference call.
Comparable in size to us as well?
They are similar in size to Juilliard Junior College, yes.
Is it, one of the main issues I think we're having too is, is it, I heard the grants is a big issue, is, did you, is it, is it the grants? Is that what we, we're talking about? Any issues with grants on that as well, Jim?
Not that, not that I'm aware of, from a grant standpoint. I think the primary issues are around financial aid.
Financial aid as well.
Yeah, on the student, on the student system side.
Did those colleges offer financial, they offer financial aid as well? Do we cross-reference, did they have any issues with financial aid?
I don't remember the specific conversation around financial aid at that time.
Okay. Well, I'm glad that we're all here discussing it. I know, I'd love to be home with my two boys and my wife right now, and my two dogs, but this is an important issue, and we'd like to work through this. So thanks for the answers, Jim and Jerome. I will succeed my time to Josh.
Thank you so much, trustee Mahalik. Okay, at this time, Karen, can you set the timer, please?
Thank you, trustee Mahalik.
Thanks for the answers, guys.
I'll just be upfront, oop.
Student trustee Stamboreski?
All right, I'll wait for-
The floor is yours now.
All right, timer's going, all right. So I'll just be upfront at, just starting to go at this, that I might not have all of my, I'm kind of piecing things together a little bit still in my head. So as I hear more questions, it's possible that we might come back around, I might have a few follow-up questions, if that makes sense, just a forewarning. The other thing I want to do is that, there's a lot of acronyms. So I was thinking about just quickly going through each of them, so that way, I'm aware of what these, I've spent a lot of time with this, but I just want to make sure everyone in the whole room knows what each of these acronyms are. So ERP, what is an ERP?
According to President Namul, it's everybody, no, everything? Everything Resource Planning, no, it's actually Enterprise Resource Planning.
All right, what does an ERP do?
So an ERP in the context of Juilliard Junior College provides functionality for human resources, finance, and the student system, which is the biggest part of Juilliard Junior College's ERP, or Enterprise Resource Planning System.
On that, what is an SIS?
Feel like I'm being quizzed here. SIS is Student Information System.
What does an SIS do?
So a student information system is responsible for all the core student capabilities and functionality that we need to serve yourself, trustee Stamboreski, and all of our great students that we serve here at the college, day in and day out. Registrations, records, financial aid, course, academic foundations, courses, curriculum, all of the good things that a student system needs to provide.
All right, what is an RFP?
RFP is Request for Proposal.
What is an RFP for?
So RFP is for, so we put together a solution that the college may be looking for, whether it's technology or otherwise. So we publish that document for public to respond and provide proposals to that college on the college's desired solution that we may be looking for at the time.
What is an SA, I promise I only have a couple more of these. What is an SaaS?
So SaaS is Software as a Service, which essentially means that we're going to operate that software outside of the college, in a data center or facility hosted by another company, or in the cloud.
All right. You're like reading my mind here, okay. What's the difference between a cloud-based system and a locally hosted one?
Great, great question. So cloud-based means that we're, it's being hosted outside of the college. On-premise, we have a data center here that the IT team is responsible for running and maintaining. Second floor of J, we have a data center here, we have servers, hardware, software that all runs in the data center. So any solutions, technology, applications that we provide that we run on-premise runs out of our data center here on the second floor of the J building.
Another question I'm going to ask is modular, so a point solution, so what is a point solution?
Point solution would be a niche application for a specific piece of functionality. So an example of that is Canvas. Here at the college is responsible for all of our online classes. So we use Canvas for all of our online classes, curriculum, syllabi for all of our online courses, we run that in Canvas. So for that purpose, for an online learning system, we use Canvas, and that's considered a third-party or a niche or a point solution.
Why use a point solution over something like a broader solution like Workday?
That's, I guess the answer to that is, it depends. There are some point solutions that are very good at what they do. When you think about financial aid, there's some point solutions, a company called Power Fades, that focuses only on financial aid. So that's a point solution, that's all they do is financial aid. So those point solutions can sometime provide greater functionality and capability than a broader system that has to provide a lot of functionality across different areas.
As to the procedure, when we were, the ERP was the, what again? What was an ERP?
Enterprise Resource Planning System.
All right, for an Enterprise Resource Planning System, when we were first developing the RFP, which stands for-
Request for Proposal.
When we were developing the Request for Proposal, what were, what was the criteria by which we determined which ERP to choose?
Yeah, I think that's a big question, we could, I could be up here for a while, but the criteria was essentially, we wanted, we wanted one system that would provide the capabilities and functionality that we need for human resources, for finance, and for our student system. So that, that's the broad criteria, and then within each of those area, we developed requirements for what we needed out of HR system, what we need out of a finance system, and what we needed out of a student system.
Underneath that, there's like a fractal of complexity, that it gets more complicated after.
Yeah, correct. In the initial RFP, we identified 584 requirements across those three areas. Once we got into that, to the more objective scoring of the final two vendors, that number of requirements expanded from 584 to 1,375.
As to the scoring procedure that the committee used to determine which RFP, sorry, ERP to go with, how is that scoring kind of determined? So how is that system produced?
I'm going to ask Jerome to step in.
Yeah, so as we presented last, in our last meeting, it was a couple of things. Number one was, what are the specifications? And so those specifications were then devised by the, what we call the functional area. So these are the people that are, as you talked about, as you get down lower to those very specific requirements that each group needs. So that's putting together specifications. Then we asked those groups to then prioritize each of their specifications. Now, that was not seen by the vendors, that was all internal. From there, then we came up with that list of questions. That list of questions was sent out to the vendors for them to respond, whether they had the functionality, did not have the functionality, or if there was a way to customize or configure their systems for that functionality.
Was that separate from the RFP, or was that together?
That is separate from the RFP. So by the time this is taking place, the RFP committee had already down-selected. When we say down-selected, and I don't know exactly how many vendors actually bitted, but by the time this started, they were down to two selections, so.
Gotcha, gotcha, all right. So for the committee, what's kind of like the general makeup of a committee like this, if I may ask?
So the committee, and this is part of the presentation from the February 1st workshop, we have all the committee members listed, but we had a cross-functional committee, there was about 20 members in that committee. Academic Affairs co-chaired the committee along with myself. Academic Affairs had five representatives. Student Development had four members, five if you include student accounts and payments. IT had four members represented on that committee, and then there was representation from HR, finance, and institutional research as well as part of that committee.
Awesome. So this is, this may seem like a broad question to ask, but what is the issue currently with Workday? Why can't we move forward with producing this into October? Why can't we move forward with the next phase?
Yeah, so great question. So essentially, what it, what it comes down to is, we have four, what Workday calls spire cases. So when we, when we, on the project, in the student project, we encountered what the college referred to as blockers. So these were things that would block us from going live. And there's four of those currently. So Workday is a formal process by which we submit those cases, and they evaluate those cases. They come back to us with recommendations on, okay, is this truly a blocker? Are there a number of workarounds or alternative solutions that can be employed to kind of help us move through those, through those blockers? And Workday works in collaboration with our implementation partner, AVAP, as part of that spire, spire process as well. So the four blockers that we have currently, one is the nightly orchestration process, which is a batch process that runs once a night. We would like that process to run more frequently or be able to schedule that process, so that way when a student wants to look at their financial aid or student financial information, that they can see that information in more of a real-time fashion.
AVAP, what is, that's another acronym there. Maybe you can't pull the full acronym, but I know-
Yeah, I don't know if AVAP-
What is, what is AVAP?
It's AVAAP is the company name.
It's their initials.
It's the implementation-
They are the implementation, Workday's implementation partner, correct. Good question.
Blockers, so you're talking about like the blockers, the roadblocks that were, that stop us from implementing this?
Yes, correct.
When are those determined, or when do you guys figure out, oh man, you know, you find it, and you're like, oh, here's a blocker? When is that, when do you stumble across them?
I'm going to let Jerome-
Yeah, so as we started, I gave kind of example of all the phases we've been going through, from platform, as well as student recruiting and admissions, and now student phase two, which we're working on. So as we start through that, the first, on the front end, we go through what we call a design phase, right? Where we essentially are meeting with those functional leads that we talked about to understand how JJC does certain processes. And then associated with those processes, we then start determining how can we configure the system to then model what we're looking at? Or do we change our business processes to more align with the system? And so as we went through that process, it was early identified, some of these things, I talked about the RAID Qlog. This is where we start capturing issues. And as we start going through that build phase, or what we call the configuration phase, as we get into testing, that's where most of these start to rear themselves, where we start to see that it does not meet the needs of the functional areas. So from there, we then start working with AVAP, our partner, to determine, is there a way to work around these? Is there a way to do configuration, et cetera? And so from there, we found that based upon the workarounds that were suggested, in other words, there are workarounds, but those did not necessarily meet JJC's need because we would either need additional help, support, or resources to do some of these workarounds. So from there, those then went through a process to escalate, and that's where we started escalating with Workday to try to get Workday to make those changes that we needed from those. And that's the spire process that Jim talked about earlier.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Stamboreski, thank you for your good questions.
Sorry, trustee Stamboreski, spire is also an acronym, so I feel like, I feel like I need to, I need some help from-
If I clarify our terms first would help.
Yeah, from Jerome, I think it's student-
I'll look it up for you, okay.
We'll find it, I wanted to be clear that that's also an acronym as well.
All right, thank you so much, Jim. So moving on, set the timer, Karen, please. Trustee Lee?
Okay, do you have the, their presentation from last week?
Yes, we do.
PowerPoint? Can you please go to page 19?
All right, trustee Lee, we're ready for your question.
Okay, so on page-
You have two slides for-
Right, so on page, well, this is page 19 of the actual slide, I meant. So page 10 is what it's on on. Okay, so in July of 2019, we hired Jerome as the project manager. Now, that was due to a Gartner assessment, correct? That said that we needed to hire-
Yeah, part of Gartner's ERP readiness project with us and their comprehensive report, one of the recommendations was to hire an independent program manager, which Dr. Mitchell, at that time, decided to bring Jerome in early, based on where we were at in the RFP committee relative to not coming to a consensus on a final decision at that time.
So the next slide is a Gartner assessment summary.
Correct.
So that was done after he was hired?
No, that was part of Gartner's recommendations, that was part of their final report.
That was part of their final report that decided to hire Jerome, and then the reboot happened after we hired Jerome.
Correct, and I'm going to let Jerome jump in here.
Yeah, so the sequence was, the hiring, there was one part that talked about hiring a program manager, so that was the first part. What you're looking at, the assessment summary, was another part where Gartner then looked at the readiness for JJC to move forward and identified certain areas. So the ones that I was asked to work on were the ones that were marked as red. In other words, critical areas that needed to be brought up to date prior to us moving forward and making a final decision.
Okay, and then the next slide is this governance model. So can you please explain to me this governance model and where this came up at again?
Yeah, so the governance model, as we talked in our, in our last meeting, the governance model really talks about how issues and how do we run the project? Like, what are all the elements, all of the pieces that are part of a project? So we talked about the functional team. So we would have someone, say, from financial aid, you'll have someone from student financials area. So each one of those members, there's what we call a lead. Those are the people responsible for the decisions and moving forward in their specific area. What you'll also see, if we start, again, that's this bottom area that you see down on this side.
Right, so that, at that point in time, when you were working with this governance model, we had not chosen a system yet.
We built the governance model prior to the system. So this was saying, once we found a system, we would then have a governance model to be able to implement that system. So if we ran into problems, we run into issues, how are those handled? How do we make sure that those issues get escalated through the proper channels?
And then the, so the next slide is the JJC business process. At that point, we still had not chosen which company we were going to go with, correct?
And this was going and helping certain areas document their current business processes, so that as we started meetings, regardless of which software, understanding your own business processes and how you currently do things, help that, will help that process move along faster.
So I just find it funny, because on the governance model slide, at the very bottom, it has Workday manager in there. So if we had not chosen Workday as a system yet, why was Workday on the governance model as if we, as if we were going to choose that before the board had ever made a decision?
That's a very good question. What you're looking at, and you'll even see names in this, this is a snapshot of what a governance model looks like. So originally, there was a framework, and then as we moved forward, we filled in the blanks with the roles, the people, and things like that. So there, it wasn't, what you're looking at is a snapshot.
That creates a bias.
That, it creates a bias, it does. This was on here way before you had ever chosen, this was just a governance model, but yet Workday is on this snapshot. That tells me that you, who were chosen to help us choose a system, were biased from the beginning on Workday. To add it into that snapshot, to me, I mean, we still didn't choose a system until a few slides later. I mean, we hadn't chosen a system, we haven't even gotten to the final tally yet, and yet on your governance model, Workday, there's a Workday, a place for a Workday manager. So to me, to me, that shows that you clearly were a little bit biased on Workday in planning on choosing that one, which isn't, I don't like that, because for the simple fact that we chose you to choose, we hired you to help us choose the best system, and I feel like you were biased- And I feel like you were biased very early on from the slides and what it, what it's showing me. It, because we, I mean, and then let's get down to.
Can I respond to your question? So again, understand the confusion. The snapshot that I'm speaking of is we built that after we had selected a vendor. So again, the model, what I was trying to do is depict what that model looks like and putting, in this case, I put people in there. So if you go back to the slide, it would be easier for people to understand the who, the what and the why.
I also, you know, when we had the slide in front of us, we could actually kind of see some of the details better. This with two pages to a slide, it's really hard to read some of this. I would really like this blown up bigger. I think then, then in that case, this is, a lot of this is actually out of order then. This was supposed to give us a synopsis of how things happened and the order that it happened in. But here, you're telling me that you gave us this governance model and you took that from the very end and you stuck it in here to, to try to give us the synopsis. I want the governance model of what you originally went with to help, help you make these decisions, not the ask, not the, not the snapshot of the governance model from the very end of where you got to this decision. So that's, so that's where this is coming in and being confusing for me. We're very early on in this presentation. I see a red flag because Workday is on there before we ever chose it.
I understand the confusion.
My next issue with this whole, biggest issue with this whole process is the fact that we started off with 520, how many was it? 584 key things that we needed this system to work for. And then when you came in, we did a reboot and now we have, how many? 13, 1375. But those original 582, those were clearly the key things that we needed for this. Everything else, it doesn't matter, whatever else the system can do with 1,300 different things. Those 582 key things, in my opinion, should have been what stayed and should have been what the, what it was graded off of. If those were the key functionalities that we needed it to do. Is this the Gartner report that we're speaking of when we're talking about? Because I don't even see campus or campus management on here as a.
That's not the Gartner readiness report. That's the market guide for higher ed student information systems.
Why is campus management not on here? As, why was it not assessed? I don't see campus management assessed.
The date of that report that I provided is 2022. Campus management, six months after we made our decision, became Anthology.
I don't see Anthology on here either. I'm not, I.
I can't, I can't speak to.
Okay, so I'm just, I just don't see Anthology on here and I don't see. The, the system to me that had the best fit, I don't even see on some of this, I don't even see on this. So I don't like that either. I would like of it to have been assessed with the other companies that we were assessing in order to have a fair shot at looking at other systems. So there's a few things, and then really quick, because I have one minute left, I would, I wanna talk about this whole grading system of the specifications. And you said that Gartner was the one who recommended that you, we use that specific or one of the grading systems that they recommended. And I would really like to go back to, because that's why I was asking about this. Because this here, at the back of it, has, you know, a weighting of high, medium and low. I would like to know what the percentages were on that. And there's like a lot that goes into this specifications of 1,300 and how they were weighted. And at the end of the day, I believe it was a $15 or $19 difference in the two systems per point value. So for $19 of a difference, we, we chose one that was cheaper. It's not adding up. Like it's not, 10 minutes is really not enough time to even go through everything, but.
Interesting, Lee, once again, we will, if necessary, we can always go back. But I just want to make sure that we continue to focus on questions. We were making some really powerful statements. So I wanna redirect, Jerome, can you answer the last question, your last question, trustee Lee, really quickly?
Is about the specification and the final tally.
For the point system, correct?
System and how that all went about.
All right, thank you.
So when we say how it all went about, just to clarify, there's 1,375 specifications. Then each one of those were identified, not by myself, but by the business. As far as for each one, they allocated the importance of each one of those. The most important would get 10 points, followed all the way down to zero points, just to. So they gave that range. That was not anything that was shared outside of JJC that was internal. That information then would go out to the vendors for them to respond to their ability to provide the, the specifications that were there. So based on that, those specifications, that would come in, we ranked them then based on the, the weighting that the business has given them and multiplying that into the number to basically provide, here is the, the, at the end of the day, the score for that particular specification.
I'm just gonna repeat this back to you so I can make sure that I'm understanding properly what you're saying. So you sent out information to the businesses for them to score themselves based on how they felt they could do these specific things for us? And they graded themselves on a scale from 10 to nothing?
No, they basically said, we can either, our, our software provides this out of the box.
Okay.
Or they could say, our software does not provide that out of the box and, but we can configure it to do that or we can customize. The difference there is a configuration is where you open the system and you basically check certain things that you want. A config, a customization is where code needs to be written to actually have the system do what it is you need. So it's a little more work and a little more time when you do a customization. And then the last one is, our system just does not do that. All of those, and their answers then were included into our contract that they basically, that they were answering these correctly. And if they didn't answer those correctly, obviously, you know, that was part of our contract where we could go back if there was an issue. So that's how that worked.
So I'm still.
Trustee Lee, we definitely will circle back. Okay, just want to make sure we continue to follow our process.
I know your process is the way it is, but I think when they're answering, the timer should be off because most of the time then is going to them responding, not her asking the questions, as I've been watching the timer.
I mean, we're all the ones, trustees, we're the ones not getting paid here. And I don't really care for the timer thing at this point in time. I wanna get to the bottom of this. I wanna ask some questions and I would have rather Stan Borski be able to continue because when you're on a train of thought and you're trying to get to a point and you're trying to get some answers questioned, I feel like this is a way of stifling us so that we can't. And I understand that I may be making a lot of comments, right? And maybe not asking questions, but my comments are helping you to understand the question that I'm getting to. I would like to, I thought I asked for the information of how we graded this. I thought that's what this was. I would like to see how we graded them, the breakdown of that, how they answered those questions and how we came to all of that. I'm a math person and I'd like to look at the numbers.
That's not a problem. We'll make, we'll make sure that can happen for you, okay? All right, moving on. Trustee Bozinski, please.
During the slide you presented us at the last meeting, how much weight was given to the financial statements of each of these firms?
Each one was given, and I don't have it in front of you, about 420 points depending on, it was a win, take winner take all for the 420 points for each one of the five areas.
So on those financial statements, who interpreted the financial statements?
That was done by, at the time, the CFO and the finance area at JJC. Yes.
So I look at one financial statement, you listed two firms and it looks like you listed liabilities for the two firms. The one with the higher liability was, Workday had a lower liability. How would that have been scored and what does liability of a company have to do with anything? They could have gone out and bought a brand new building, have a $200 million facility built that isn't generating revenue yet, but you're gonna penalize them in this matrix for having a liability that the other firm doesn't have. You also listed the balance sheet of two unequal companies. You have one that dealt strictly with college and campuses with fixed budgets, comparing it to a firm that deals with corporate America that although we'll think it has unlimited budget, has a much broader range of dollars to play with. So those two worksheets there bother me because if they were used in any way to determine the strength of either of those two companies or the two solutions, to me, there's no value add to looking at any of these financial statements. The only thing we should have looked at on a financial statement is, does this company seem viable to still be producing or supporting us in 10 years? That's it. We don't care if they bought a building and have a liability. We don't care if they charge corporate America more than they charge a college. I hope they do. We hope that we get the best price available. So to me, there was no value add in that portion of it. And now that was a statement, not a question, but you mentioned Indian, or Jim, you mentioned Indian River, Indian River College as a reference?
Yeah, Indian River State College in Florida, yeah.
Okay, were all phases functional at this facility?
They were fully live on HR, finance and student at that time.
So student phase two was functional?
Correct.
We saw student phase two working on a campus somewhere in America.
Correct. I don't remember the state of their financial aid at the time. I'd have to probably peel back and take a look at that. That was back in 2019, I suppose.
And the student, the student aid portion of it was tested?
When you say student financial aid or, that, that's, yeah, that's what I'm referring to. I can't recall back in 2019 what the state of their financial aid was at that time.
So we don't know if it was working for them.
I, unless I go back and try to peel through, if I can find videos of calls and things of that nature, I have to go back and, and take a look at that.
Do we have any other references where all phases were tested and functional at a campus?
There are other colleges on Workday that are running all, all three phases, HR, finance, full student with financial aid, yes.
And they don't have the problem we have?
You know, we would be the first Workday school in Illinois on the financial aid component. So the other schools that are running financial aid are outside of Illinois. We have conferred with some of those over the course of the implementation and gained insight from them as well.
So we don't know of anyone that has them all functional?
We do, we do, yeah. There's, there are schools that are fully functional on student, including financial aid.
With the live updates?
Yes.
And we don't have that implementation here working?
We, JJC's requirements on financial aid based on the four blockers that we have, we came to a collective decision late last year to, we, we developed three strategies. One would be the 12-month extension. One was to go live on time and add additional human resources and staff to support to go live. And the third is to have a longer term look until Workday delivered all of the functionality that we needed. So other than that, I mean, those are the blockers around financial aid and some of the other things that, that we've talked about that has prevented us from going live at this time.
When did we know we had issues with phase two or student phase two?
The first from financial aid, I believe, was started in July of last year. And so we started that process of understanding, are there other options that we could take in order to come up with workarounds, working with AVAP to determine what those workarounds could be? And then documenting those workarounds, going back to JJC, you know, finding that those were not acceptable at the time. So then we went down what we call the Spire process, which I still can't remember the acronym, sorry. For the Spire process, which is the escalation process through Workday to request a fix for these four items that we, we sent.
When did we initiate the Spire process or the first step in the Spire process? Did we create any spires or?
I'm sorry?
Did we create spires, software problem action requests?
Yes.
We did create them. When did we create them?
I wanna say those were created and initially going through what we call the Workday delivery assurance that would have been in September.
So we, we recognized a problem in July and we don't go back to the vendor until September, but we were trying to come up with the workaround on our own when we're not writers of the software?
No, we're working with our implementation partner AVAP, who also works with Workday. And so again, there's these, it's not that we were waiting, we're trying to find solutions. And again, if we go through, there's a lot of issues that come up on a day to day that we're trying to find solutions to move forward with.
Okay, my question is though, if we came across a blocker, why is it two months before we go back to the software writers with a problem that isn't, isn't working for us? Yes, I understand, looking for a workaround, we have to do the business of the college, absolutely, 100%. And I know her staff has been, you know, doing cartwheels. However, why do we wait two months to go back to a vendor for a solution that isn't working? And is the expectation when we have a failed solution for us on campus to come up with the workaround?
I think in some cases, it's not just the workaround, it's can we change the business process? Is, so taking into account all of the different variables that are going into coming up with a solution. Again, some of these solutions are communications. We can put in what we call change management activities where we educate people on, this is the process, this is how you can do it. Others, again, as we said, there are ways of creating reports or customizing or configuring the system. So each one of those needs to go through those steps for us to then determine and kind of exhaust that we've done everything we can, working with our implementation vendor, to then go to Workday as a next step.
I am still struggling with why we don't go back to the vendor, why we have to jump through a whole process to go back and say, we're paying for this, it doesn't work. That's gonna be struggling for me for all aspects. And I wrote software for seven years for a major company. I have a little idea on how this works and the software writers usually knew overnight. Most of the time I got woken up in the morning. I don't think waiting two months to solve a problem or going back to the vendor at that point.
Let me just jump in for one. I don't think we waited two months. I mean, we have weekly, regular cadence of weekly meetings where these issues come up on a regular basis. We have a weekly project management meeting that Workday participates in as well as our implementation partner. These issues were identified immediately and conversations began immediately on resolution of those issues. Some of that is working directly with our implementation partner, but Workday is very integrated in that from a delivery assurance standpoint. They know what the issues are. They know what we're working on. They're helping us coming up with workarounds. They're talking to other customers and colleges that have gone through similar things and providing guidance all the way throughout. So I don't think we waited two months at all. I think these conversations were happening, happening regularly. In fact, we came to the August board meeting with a presentation. Jerome did a presentation to the board where we did highlight some of those issues in that presentation in the August board meeting as well. So there was regular conversations. We were taking initiative, taking action, making sure it was being escalated appropriately. Workday has a very formalized process for spires and how that gets submitted and approved and all of that. But we were very much involved in that from, from minute one. I do want to go back and just answer one other question, maybe not answer a question, but just give my perspective on, on campus management. One of the big concerns that I had about their long-term viability was their debt ratio was 96%. They're a highly leveraged company, 100 million dollar company at the time, I think with net income of maybe a million bucks. But the debt ratio was 96%. I had very, was very much concerned about their long-term viability as a company. Once we made our decision, within six months, Anthology inquired the assets of, of campus management at that time. So I wanted to share that information as well.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the Spire, you created a Spire in September, July, August, September? Was there any response? When we create an action request for software, do they respond to it? Do we get a timeline? Do we get a critical status on it? Or do we just hang in the wind hoping they'll respond to it? So we identified it back then, we don't have a working solution. Do we have a response from them? Are they even working it? Is a writer of the software accepted it as a problem to work on? Or is it just, this is how it works? You mentioned software out of the box. This did not work out of the box. Do we have a list of all the things they came back to us with and said, no, these do not work out of the box?
Yes.
Do we have it for them and Workday and campus works or campus management?
Correct. Those were part of the specifications that came back and those have been, I know a team has already looked at those and gone through those subsequent to, you know, the discussions we've been having here.
Prior to choosing a vendor, did we go through them?
Prior to choosing a vendor, did we go through them? Yes.
My time has expired. Party to the beat.
Thank you, trustee Bozinski. So I'm moving on. Of, of course, we'll circle back if necessary. Please know that. Trustee Morales, I know you're online, but of course the, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and the opportunity. Earlier. Earlier at the previous board meeting, Dr. Namou mentioned that our governor is increasing our monetary award program, our MAP grant for the state of Illinois, which means that there is definitely a high need for students to receive, there are high-need families out there that count on these grants, right? Everything starts in financial aid. You can register for 12 or 15 credit hours, which are both full-time, but if you don't receive the grant, if you're a high-need student and you have financial need and you do not receive that Pell or MAP grant or that scholarship, you can kiss away the registration part of the process because everything starts with our finances. We make decisions on whether or not we can pay for things. And if we don't have a system that can track when students add classes, they drop classes, therefore, we need to refund that money back to either the student or to the state when students' grades drop and they have to do standards of academic progress. Those are very sensitive elements that are going to drive, our computer system's going to drive whether that student is going to be successful, if they're going to stay and continue, if they can afford it. And if we don't have a system that is ready for that, we are not, that system is not student-focused, it's not focused on the success of our students. When we initially were bringing in different vendors, I was very concerned about the cost because this was a huge investment. And I attended meetings in person and took time and lost work time of my personal work time to be here, to be present, to make sure that we had every staff represented and that they were asking questions. And I specifically sat in the financial aid one because I used to work, that was my team. And I worked with, side by side with these people here. And they asked a lot of great questions and they were made assurances that everything was going to work out, and it hasn't. I wasn't trying to micromanage the college, I was simply there to make sure that we had a process and that everybody's voice was heard. And now, here we are. Needless to say, I am very disappointed that we're even having to have these discussions. And like Trustee Lee says, we don't get paid, we don't get paid to do this. We're here as volunteers, we're here as stewards of the people that elected us to be here to manage the budget, and we need some solid answers. We can't, you can't look at us in the face every time and tell us we are successful because no, we're not. This system is a great system, maybe for a manufacturing company, you know, but it's not meeting our needs now. So with that, I don't have any questions. I'm going to yield my time and let's just move on to the next person. Thank you.
Dr. Farmer, can I have Jerome say a few words just on the financial aid functionality standpoint?
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's one of the reasons we're here and we had responded, basically we're requesting those options that Jim talked about earlier, is that as we've gone through this from our financial aid team, it's been very clear that they had concerns with where and what the system could do. And the workarounds, although we had workarounds that we could implement, there were still concerns that that would potentially create other issues. So we were looking to do as part of this and part of our request out of option two that the cabinet had agreed upon was to essentially give us a year to look for a third-party or a point system for financial aid. And so in this time period that we've been working on, I know the student development and the team with the financial aid, they've gone out and started looking at some of these best-of-breed financial aid systems. And as they've gone through that process, again, we were hoping to take the time to see if those processes, if that third-party system would work for JJC. And if not, give us the time to then make sure that we could put in these manual processes and also work, continue working with Workday to find solutions to the problems that we have.
Okay, thank you so much, Jerome. And Trustee Morales, thank you again for your comments. All right, so Chairman O'Connell, I'm going to go to you next before we conclude with Vice Chair Broderick. Do you have any questions at this time?
No, I'll yield my time and start going around through the other direction because that's what's going to happen.
All right, so thank you. So at this time, I would like to turn the floor over to Vice Chair Broderick.
Thank you very much. One, I'd like to state this, gentlemen, I expect you to be honest and truthful. Being at a conference, we talked to a lot of people, a lot of people on Workday, and I want to make sure that the statements that I heard from them are correct from you. And right now, I will share this, Indian River said they did not go live with student and they are very remiss in the situation. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but they decided not to be considered a referral for the system. In regards to when you mentioned the referrals, there was two referrals that Janice Rida confirmed with me, that both said the student side was not working at all. She did not know why you guys went forward with it. All you did was come out with the negative towards campus management. Give the facts that we're looking for. We asked specifically, and you went first for the negative, give us the reasons. And if Workday got two negative referrals, why did we go with Workday? You wanted to spell out campus management first. I went to the direct person that took the referrals and did the responses of the referrals, and she specifically told me, because I'm a searcher, I'm going to find out the answers. So if you tell me a lie, I already know what's a lie. And I won't take a liar. So I'm going to be very specific. Did you not know that there were two negative referrals in the research that was done for Workday?
I was in the meeting with Indian River State College. I don't, I think Indian River was very honest with the committee at that time. I don't remember that experience being negative, no.
Well, Janice Rida said there was two, that they did not, that the two referrals that were given did not have student. And in the RFP that you have...
Indian River was using student system at that time.
I was told they weren't by them. So I'm just, I'm giving you the facts that I've got. In the ERP that you have, 95% of it is focused on the student, the student. Why would we change and go to an ERP? What was the reason for going to an ERP? What's the main focus of an ERP?
Not sure I understand the question.
So Vice Chair Broderick, could you re...
When you are looking at a new system, what is the main focus that was on Illusian that identified going to a new system? Was it HR? Was it finance? Was it student? You've got three modules that we're talking about. I have talked to Anthology, I've talked to Illusian, I want to know.
So Jim, this goes back to the original presentation. So what she is requesting is, you know, tell us why we decided to move forward with the ERP modernization. That's the original question.
That's the original question.
Yes, thank you.
What generates that?
So campus conversations on this topic started back in 2015. Two main factors for those conversations at the time, one was $2.1 million Title III grant. A lot of conversations happening across the college about data, getting data out of our systems, the struggle to get data out of our systems. The other thing that was going on was our 2016 through 2019 strategic plan. Again, a lot of campus-wide conversations happening. In fact, goal two at the time was very much focused on improving access to data, improving our systems as part of the strategic plan at that time.
Okay, you're repeating what's in here. I'm asking specifics now because what you've given me in here is not what I'm looking for. What generated us to go to a new ERP? What generated us? I read all of this, that's beside it. What motivated us to do a new ERP? Was it the student block? Was it the HR block or the finance? If your RFP is showing 95% student need, why did we not look at student need, the student part?
It was all three of those components. We were looking to have that in one ERP system. At the time, cloud solutions, point solutions were emerging in the marketplace. We were starting to have to acquire more point solutions, more third-party solutions that lived in the cloud and connect them back to Illusian, which was an outdated, starting to become an outdated technology at that time. The environment was getting more costly, more complex, more difficult to find staff and resources to support that technology with a lack of a clear direction on where Illusian was going to modernize their system. So it was a confluence of items. We asked for, in the RFP, for all three components, HR, finance, and student. Of course, being in higher education, serving our students is the most important thing that we do here at the college.
Right, but in your ERP, every page of it reflects the student, the student module. That was the key component, it seems to be, changing from Illusian to the new ERP system. So I throw this out at you, and I have all my responses to your questions that you gave me, so I hope everyone affords me that opportunity. If that be the case, you threw out Illusian due to the fact that it didn't have a roadmap, correct?
Trustee Broderick, I did not throw out Illusian. That was a committee decision to not move Illusian forward based on their presentation and proposal.
Okay, so roadmap got thrown out by the committee. I understand that there was nothing that was concrete in Workday's proposal for the student module, is that correct?
That is not true.
So we had a full student module that we could put in?
They responded to the proposal, they met our requirements, they answered the 1,375 requirements, told us exactly what they could do, what they couldn't do, what was coming, and future product development around all three elements, HR, finance, and student.
Okay, then why didn't we put the student module in first?
Because priority one here is to serve students. Why didn't we put the student module in first?
Why didn't we? Because Anthology and Euclian said the first module they would put in would be the student module so that we could see, that was the circle. Our circle of care is for the student. If we don't have a product to meet the needs for our students, we're not meeting our needs for them. HR, HR didn't need it, payroll didn't need it. I'm trying to figure it out, Jim. When everybody else said to me of the companies, of the community banks at the national seminar said, no, you put the student piece in first, you put the student piece in first. So I guess that's where I'm trying to figure out, we could have backed out if the student piece didn't work. We're stuck in this thing, 15 million. And yeah, I'm upset with the whole thing. I'm really upset. Because I have talked to so many community colleges at this legislative meeting that are, this seemed to be like the ERP subject. And you've got a lot of colleges out there that are having problems.
Workday's methodology is to implement HR and finance, what they call their platform, HR and finance, their methodology is to implement those first because it is core to a lot of the elements that need to be connected to the student system. That is their methodology for implementation.
That's their methodology that you accepted and your committee accepted, and it was a poor decision, I will say that. But I'm going to go through this. Jerome, I want to ask you a question too. Do you have certification in Workday, Illusian, or Campus Management, now Anthology?
Repeat the question again, I heard.
Do you have certification with Workday, Illusian, or Campus Management, which is now Anthology?
No.
You don't?
No, I have a program manager certificate, which you're required to take once we selected Workday, then as program manager, I have to take a test through Workday to then be able to get access to start and manage as part of the project management team.
Did you have that before or after we hired you?
No, after.
After. So in looking at your resume, and I'm sorry if I'm tearing things apart, I don't see any higher education and I don't see any Workday implementation in higher education.
If you go to Sync Solutions, you will see higher ed.
Where at?
City Colleges of Chicago.
That was old, that's 2016 when you were with PeopleSoft, which is now Oracle, correct?
Oracle...
PeopleSoft is now Oracle, correct?
Yeah.
PeopleSoft is now under Oracle, that is correct.
Correct. So I'm not seeing any Workday in this implement, correct?
The, no.
As I'm looking at what you did, I don't see any implementation...
But I was not hired for Workday, I was hired to be a program manager to implement the solution that JJC selected.
Correct. But did you not recommend Workday to us?
No, I did not recommend, that came out of the specifications, and the specifications. Again, I presented that, but I presented the specification and the outcome.
Okay, so I just want to take a moment because I recognize that Vice Chair Broderick, you are upset. So I just want us to take a moment because again, we talked about the importance of being respectful to each other. And I understand you're very passionate about this particular topic, but once again, I will, once again, ask for you to be respectful in your tone, in your delivery, because I want to make sure that Jim and Jerome clearly understand your questions. And when we get worked up and frustrated, sometimes our questions are not very clear.
No, and I...
Okay, okay. So just, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I understand too, our side of it is...
I know, I understand.
In 2019, five of us approved this thing.
Yes.
And we went by trust...
I understand.
That when it was presented to us, it was right. Now I am looking at credentials, and I'm sorry, Jerome, we're paying you a lot of money, and I don't see the background for Workday. You got it afterwards, and I'm looking for that to see where you come in to help us work with this. Because in my life, we have to have people that are experienced before we can hire them in. So that's, I'm going to leave it at that.
Vice Chair, I appreciate, just a few minutes ago, just your tone and delivery was perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now I will go through the questions, the responses that I've got. Number two, and I don't know, do you have the questions in front of you? All of you? Okay, two. How does their customer base break down by segment, four-year, two-year, or four-year private? How many two-year public colleges are live on student and financial aid system, fully live with every bit of it?
We'd have to give you that breakdown after the fact. We have the total numbers here listed in the response, but if we can provide further breakdown of segment, we'd have to do that as a follow-up activity.
Okay. Committing to and implementing are two different things. Just like JJC, are there schools declaring themselves live on student information system with just a sliver admissions functionality and a part of registration? Jim, you termed that a success. We are sure there are other schools in the same boat where they have to say that they are live, but really are not. Indian River is an example of that. I spoke to them. I'm asking you to be specific with us because success does not mean one module, it means full implementation of the whole product. In our livelihoods, systems built into modules have certain components. If the components pass, then it's a pass. It's not a success, it's a pass. If they fail, that's a pass or a fail that you use. When you get to each of the modules and you complete all of the implementation, then the implementation is a success. And I'm going to share that because that's what I have been explained to me. Number four, I'm going to look at that. Many schools have stopped their implementation after finance and HCM for two reasons. One, the staff is exhausted and there's no complete SIS, student information system to go on to. But several have gone out to RFP for an SIS. Josh, you listening, SIS?
Yes.
To complete their transformation to the cloud. Ohio State is probably the most visible of the Workday customers to stop the implementation. Do we have any opportunities to go back out for an RFP for a student section?
So I want to make sure we clearly understand the question. So Jim and Jerome, or Jim, you may want to respond to that question. Vice Chair, I did note the time at this point. Please know we're going to circle back, but I will allow Jim to respond to that last question.
Yeah, I guess my response to that would be you approved a IVNV this evening, I would expect that as part of that engagement, that they could offer an opinion on that topic to the board. My own personal perspective, opinion on that topic is that it would be exponentially more costly and more disruptive.
But I'm going to follow back on that. Being that it would be more costly, we've already incurred additional costs for the Illusian, for AVAP, that should not have been included. So being that said, how do you equivocate saying that that would have been more expensive to go out for another system because this current system doesn't have it?
I'm going to ask you to clarify additional costs. We have not incurred any additional costs with AVAP. All the costs so far have been approved by the board and the contracts that have been presented at this point.
Okay, Jim, you're not following me then. These are additional costs that came out because Workday was not completed in the timeframe it should have been. So because of the additional costs of AVAP that now expires in 9 of 2023, which is September of 2023, does the board want to move forward to approve the... does the board want to move forward to approve the extension of doing something with AVAP? That's what, almost 1.9 million? When it's Workday, if I'm not mistaken, that's caused the delays, or do I blame us?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer for, for that. I'm not sure, I think it's a statement.
Well, those costs, those costs of Illusian's being still with us on premise and with AVAP, those are the things that Dr. Namua put on our January thing, that we, our January agenda, that we asked to be moved off.
Sure.
So with that being said, those are additional costs that need to be added to the fact that Workday is much more expensive than Campus Management, now Anthology, would have been.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm moving on, I'm circling back around. So, Trustee Garcia, any additional questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes. What are the additional workaround costing us, just for the record?
The alternative solutions or workarounds that we presented as part of the Spire cases, or?
Everything for Workday that they're not capable for, Workday's not capable to do certain things. What are the additional costs in all other softwares costing us in order to fill the gaps and holes for Workday?
Well, I think what we presented as far as the options relative to those four Spire cases, it was option one that we presented was approximately $600,000.
You know.
That is not an expense that we're currently, that was just one of the options we considered.
That's one of the options, that's something that I was going to present. Is there any additional cost at this moment, though, like then we originally put in the contract?
No.
Oh, okay. I just have one flat-out question. Do you think Workday will be successful for us, and, at all, at some point?
This is just my personal opinion, but I do feel that Workday will continue to ramp up the pace of their product development. They certainly have heard and understand the concerns and the gaps on the student product side, especially with some of the issues that we're having. We're not alone as a college in some of those issues and concerns. Certainly, Workday is paying attention, they are listening to those, they are taking action as far as hiring additional product developers to help continue to move the development of the student system along. In fact, we're getting ready for our fourth major release of the Workday platform here in March. And on average, Workday is delivering 350 new updates to the student system as part of those major releases. So I do think that the product will continue to evolve at a faster pace. I do think that Workday will continue to work to shore up the gaps that exist. I do think at some point that Workday will exceed our demand for functionality in the student product. We're early, there's 32 higher ed customers live on the student system. They have 100 colleges committed to the student platform as well. They're winning a lot of the new deals, I think 78% of the new cloud-focused deals, Workday is winning those deals. And so I think we will see more investment at a faster pace. And I do think ultimately that we can call the entire program successful and not just the individual modules that we have gone live with at this point. But again, I want to qualify that, Trustee Mahalik, by saying that's just my informed opinion at this time, based on what I know is happening in the marketplace.
And, you know, the one thing that we keep on going back to, we said in the beginning, is we wanted an all-in-one system. And obviously, this is not an all-in-one system. Workday doesn't reimburse us for the workarounds, obviously, so. And it is very disappointing, and again, I apologize to the campus community if we chose this based on price rather than functionality. So, on that note, I'd like to succeed the rest of my time to Josh, so keep that 1 minute 30's going, and Josh gets my rest of my time.
All right, thank you, I really appreciate it.
So, just keep that going.
It's actually perfect, because I wanted to clarify something real quick. So the thing I wanted to clarify was the reason I went over those acronyms is because not only are we talking to each other as interlocutors, but we're also talking to the people in the audience. We're letting them know what's going on, and the people that are watching the stream. So I wanted to make absolutely clear, build from the ground up, what do we all agree on at this point? And then move our way up to get to the disagreement, so everybody is on the same page. That was the goal of me bringing up the SIS and the acronyms. It sounds silly, but it's necessary for good communication. So, off of what Trustee Mahalik said, this is not an all-in-one system. So was there any, when the committee was meeting, was there any pretense that this was a finished product? So you had the HR portion, you had the student portion, and then you had the financial portion. Was that, did you guys think that was a finished product at the time?
Yeah, first comment you said I want to respond to, and there is no perfect system. There is no all-in-one system. We've talked a lot here about point solutions and third-party applications and things like that, so I want to kind of refer back to some of your earlier comments and questions on that topic. So, there's no perfect system, whether it's Workday or Illusian or Anthology, or a range of others that might be out there. There isn't a perfect system. Second part of that question, refresh my memory again, is, oh, the committee was very aware, not only the committee, but I think the college community was aware, because we had gone through a range of demonstrations by the vendors. But the committee was aware at the time of where the Workday student product was at. There's a lot of good dialogue, discussions, debate had on that topic at that time. We kind of knew what the state of the maturity was, we knew that the student module of Workday was their newest piece of their enterprise resource planning or ERP system at that time. We felt like in 2019, ahead of making that decision, by the time we went live three years down the road, that it would be a much different, more fully-featured student system than what we saw back in 2019.
So did we buy a promise?
Oh my gosh, I just can't even.
It sounds bad, but that's really kind of what I'm saying, that we bought a promise. And my understanding is most of this stuff isn't in the roadmap at this point. That we want it to be in the roadmap, but it certainly isn't. So my understanding, as it operates, is we bought into a promise that we're not being, you know, there's no contractual obligation for them to give us any compensation back for unfulfilled, for the services that we expected in there that weren't in it. Is that what occurred?
You know, I would say out of 1,375 requirements, we're down to a very small percentage of that. So I would disagree on the comment that we bought, we bought a promise.
But the operational capacity of the college has been, you know, if we were to try and move forward with the system, it stops us. And if the goal, if the understanding was that this would be a finished product and operational by that time, I would say that we did buy a promise. Do you understand where I'm coming from for that?
I understand the statement.
All right. So, those blockers that were identified, so did that play into the committee's decision to come to this conclusion, to go with Workday? I would imagine that some of these blockers were a lot bigger than others, and they were probably identified pretty early on. So how did the committee deal with these big-issue, big-ticket blockers?
When we talk about the committee, I want to separate, there's the RFP committee. At this time, the RFP committee was done, and we were in implementation. So we're talking the functional leads or the subject matter experts from each area when you speak committee at this point in time. So again, as we go through and we find these issues and they're identified as what we call RAID queue items, RAID queue meaning their risk. I'm sorry?
No.
Oh, risk, action items. Risk, action items. Issues. Gosh, decisions, it's been a long day. Decisions and questions, right? So those are the RAID queue. So again, we're trying to track all of those as they're coming in. And then we start working on those and prioritizing those with, you know, our vendor to determine, are these showstoppers, are there workarounds? In some cases, we're able to come up, a good example would be residency. So is a person within resident within the district or out of the district? That is something that our implementation vendor AVAP was able to create that workaround for us to make and automate that process. So again, we go through those stages to find, are there things that we can do to then implement the system and automate the system? For those that don't, those are the ones then we start an escalation process. And so as I mentioned earlier, that is the escalation process that then we go through to make sure that everything's being documented, everything's being, you know, going through the right steps, the cases are being issued, and that we're following those cases, and that we get a response from Workday in this case. Workday came and gave presentations on their feedback on each one of those.
All right, so the block, so there were some blockers, I'm trying to parse the answer. There were some blockers that were identified early in the process, yes? Did we plan out point solutions, so companies, third parties to come in? Did we plan that out in advance, being like, okay, some of this isn't going to be here, and we understand that, so we're partnering with third parties?
Yeah, one that we talked about is NellNet for the cashiering side of the house. That is one of those point solutions we were aware of early on. And we actually went through a formal, another RFP process to find a solution for that. And NellNet was actually chosen as part of that, as a separate RFP solution that was delivered in that case. So that's one example.
All right, we'll move around the room.
Ken Bersky, thank you. Trustee Lee, I promised I was coming back.
Someone please explain to me the Magic Quadrant for Cloud HCM Suites for 1,000-plus employee enterprise from Gartner. What is this, since you didn't know what, what is this?
So that is a Magic Quadrant report, just as it says it's for enterprises with 1,000-plus employees. That is not higher education-specific document.
Not higher education-specific, however, it does, so this was to compare different companies or different, this was just their assessment, what was this used for?
No, that document was not used for anything. I provided it as an example of a Magic Quadrant document based on Trustee Broderick's reference at the last couple of meetings.
Okay, so this wasn't used, and this wasn't a part of any of this?
No, there is another comprehensive Gartner document that is the ERP readiness assessment. I think that's already been provided to the board, possibly, Dr. Farmer?
Some of us reviewed that document when I sat one-on-one with all of you, but we don't have a hard copy of that available now.
Okay, well, let me just read through this really quick, a few of the things. It's a 41-minute read, and I've been sitting here reading through it as we've been going through this. I would like to reiterate what Trustee Mahalik said, that the whole point of us moving and doing the ERP was so that we would have one cohesive system, and we didn't have a bunch of third-party applications, correct?
Again, that is not a higher ed-specific document, so it's very focused on.
I understand, but the reason we were going to a new system was so that we wouldn't have so many third-party applications, and that we would have one streamlined system, correct?
That document is for human capital management only, so it's going to be very focused on that topic.
But the reason that we were moving to another system was so that we had everything all-inclusive, correct?
The desire of the committee at the time, we set a guiding principle, is to have as much in one ERP system as we possibly could around HR, finance, and student.
If I pull the thing that she sent me, that Trustee Broderick sent to me, the very first, not the, not what she presented to us last week or two weeks ago, but what she started to bring, this, it was a, from a board meeting in 2019, 2020, when I wasn't here.
I want them, I have them.
Yeah, so the very first slide on there says that the reason that we're going to a new ERP, which is something that you presented, or somebody from your area, that was the presentation that was given to the board before I was here, and it states that the ERP was for those purposes, was to streamline everything and not have third-party. And regardless if this only focuses on, what did you say, this only focuses on finance?
Really, no, the HR, human capital management, the HR component.
Oh, so HR, which is really important, but let's just, let's just see what this says. So it says, "A third-party implementation partner performs approximately 80% of Workday HCM deployments." So that's, and that's just for one section. They had over 80% that they needed other implementation partners for. We're going to go on.
Let me clarify, can you read that again, please?
What page are you on, Michelle?
I am on the Gartner report, page 20 of 31, I'll start at the top. "Workday HCM is available hosted in a public cloud managed by Workday or in a public cloud managed by AWS. The latter is a recent approach and currently represents only a small percentage of customers. Workday supports REST and SOAP API technology, with GraphQL API technology expected to be supported in 2023." A promise, like what he said. "A third-party implementation partner performs approximately 80% of Workday HCM deployments." So therefore, and even if this was only for a part of Workday, Workday clearly was at 80% of needing a third-party implementation for that. But hold on, I'm going to go down to the.
No, let me clarify the statement, so that, what that statement means is that Workday leverages an implementation partner network to do their installs of the software. That's what that means. AVAP is a certified Workday implementation partner, yes.
So that's AVAP, who we have also had to hire other people to help, because they don't answer us quickly enough, which if you go back to this, with our security levels of one, two, severity levels of one, two, three, and four, they're supposed to have a rebound time of getting back to us in 30 minutes to an hour to four hours for different, for different relatable things that I feel like we hired somebody to do.
Again, that's Workday and not AVAP.
So benefits of, so these are the cautions under this, and it says, "Benefits Administration. Workday does not deliver outsourcing services as part of Benefits Administration, leading clients to engage third-party service providers for such services. Furthermore, Gartner has observed less evidence of investment in Benefits Administration when compared with other leading vendors." "Total operating cost and value. Workday remains one of the most expensive options in the market for Cloud HCM Suites. Furthermore, to unlock certain values such as reporting, analytics, workforce planning, or employee experience, additional modules must be purchased," which I want to look at when we're looking at how many modules we purchased, add that to the budget too, because we were not counting that in too, because we have had to purchase other modules when I was looking at the information. "This makes Workday an expensive option, one that not everyone will want to pay for." So, all in all, if we knew that Workday was an expensive, it sounds like here, Workday, Gartner even told us that Workday was expensive, but yet, when it was presented to the board, it was presented as it was not going to be one of the expensive options. It has, you've come back to us needing more money, which is why we're even here talking about the whole subject. And so basically, what we're coming down to here is, do we dump more money into a system that may never work for us? Because it may never do what we need it to do for financial aid. And that's why we're here today, that's what we're talking about. So we can talk around and dance around, it's working for what it has done, we really hope that it works in the future. But the bottom line is, is we bought a promise, and they have no contractual anything to hold, we have no way to hold them, to them coming up and making sure that this system ends up working for what we needed to for financial aid for our students. That is the bottom line of why we're here today. The system is not working for everything that we needed to. And it sounds like, from every information that I've read, that we knew that.
Okay, Trustee Lee, thank you. Moving on to Trustee Bozinski, any additional questions at this time?
I defer my time to Trustee Broderick, because I like a lot of questions that she has on the sheet that haven't been answered, or asked or answered, and I defer to her to, you know, clarify her own questions.
Absolutely, we'll move on to you. Quickly, Trustee Morales, any additional questions or comments at this time?
Yes, financially, as I mentioned earlier, that's a whole separate beast in and of itself. They have to do daily, they have to keep up, and it's very difficult to keep up with all of the changes from the Department of Education. Earlier, I think Jerome mentioned, you had to look at processes. You need an expert that knows and understands the needs of the financial aid department. And Workday has to be able to meet these needs and be flexible to accommodate any changes that are coming up, because if this, if the student can't pay for this, we don't have students. And if we don't have students, we don't need anything else, we don't need a software system. It has to be able to accommodate to the financial aid system, to the packaging of grants, tiering these grants and scholarships and loans, subsidized, unsubsidized, when they drop classes, add classes, once again. This should have been. This should have been, Jim, this should have been one of the first areas that, like Trustee Lee said, somebody knew that. I think people knew that the financial aid's needs were not going to be met, regardless of if you can meet the the finance department, which is different from financial aid, or the human resource department, or even registration. I have no further comment at this time, thank you.
Yeah, I would just say quickly on, on your comments, Trustee Morales, that we have a phenomenal subject matter expert, we have a phenomenal financial aid team, but we have a phenomenal director of financial aid, Deanna Hogan, who has been instrumental in unit testing, in end-to-end testing, in documenting these issues in a ton of detail. She's done a incredible job of testing the system, providing input, identifying issues, escalating all of those good things. So I think the college should feel great that they have the expertise in the financial aid department that they have today.
Thank you, I agree. I think Deanna is amazing, and we have a great team of financial aid staff in that department. I agree, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
You want me to go now?
Chairman O'Connell, any additional questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, Vice Chair.
All right, getting back to you saying a perfect system. Being, speaking with many of the people on the committee, apparently, Jim, you were the co-chair, and you sold it as an all-in-one system to the committee, did you not?
I did not sell anything to the committee, Trustee Broderick. I was one member of a 20-ish person committee.
Okay, well, according to the committee, that is what the members have said, that you sold it to them as one system, that was your position on Workday. So, saying that we needed a perfect system, and now, I mean, that it was a perfect system then, and it's not now, really is hypocritical, and I'll state that.
I didn't say it was a perfect system then, I'm not saying it's a perfect system now.
No, when you came to us at the board, you told us we needed one system, and this was going to be the magic system that was going to make us better than Alucion.
That was the goal that the.
That was the, that was the piece that you told us. Okay, and I could go back to the tapes and listen to them again.
That was the guiding principles that the committee developed in the RFP at that time, and in my presentations to the Board of Trustees at that time, I did not talk about, I did not make a recommendation for Workday, we were very much going through a process of evaluation at that time.
When it came to the selection and everything else, you made a commitment to the board, the five of us, that this was the exact company, the true resource that we needed. So I'm just saying, that's my statement. Let's go back through my questions, because, number one, I'm looking at Workday that you provided to us, that says it's got a SLA of 24/7/365? 365, Workday doesn't do it. Then I'm looking at the one, number five. I asked, what's the LA, SLA for AVAP and Navistar? There's no SLA-based service. And I understand we have something that's outstanding since October that hasn't been rectified. In my mind, and in my days of operation, if we didn't have something written into the agreement, we should never have done any business with them. And SLA is important. Your people need to know how soon they're going to get a response back.
So Vice Chair, really quickly, because you did a very fine job of documenting the questions, and we responded to those. I, I would recommend that we stay focused to the.
Yeah, but it is, it's, it's part of mine.
Okay, what question are you on? I just want to make sure I'm, question five.
Five, which says, there is no SLA-based service for AVAP.
So Jim and Jerome, if you can respond to question five, if you, if you have the questions, and your responses, it might be a little bit better.
With respect to the support we get from Workday out of the technology and the solution that is 24 by 7 by 365, those issues are identified by severity level, and each of those severity levels has a response time, I think, as low as 30 minutes. That's Workday on the technology and the platform. AVAP is a post-go-live consultative support service. It is not SLA-based, it is based on the JJC configuration of Workday. We submit tickets or cases to AVAP. Each of those cases are evaluated for what work needs to happen, and then AVAP commits to amount of time to do a configuration, configure a new business process, fix an issue, look at a potential problem. So it could be an hour response time, it could be eight hours, it could be multiple days, depending on what the nature of that case is.
That we have one that's out for four months, that's unacceptable to me, absolutely unacceptable.
We've addressed any of those cases that have been submitted, that have felt, fallen outside of a reasonable timeframe based on our needs, we've addressed those directly with, with AVAP personnel.
Then why didn't you bring those back to us to know about it? Because we are supposed to be approving in January the extension of AVAP. At this point, I want nothing to do with AVAP, because if they are sluggish in responding to our needs, they don't meet our needs. Okay, number six. I am looking at using a third-party like Farelli or Campus Works. I think this would have ensured the process and been reflective of the school's requirements and institutional goals. It would also have ensured a decision matrix that was proven and balanced. If we surveyed our peers, two-year colleges over 10K enrollment, and if we find the majority of them using them, that they would be using the RFP development evaluation and contract negotiation, and none of us would be sitting here going through this, because I think we would have had knowledge from those two companies that are ACES, that are certified in Workday, Alucion, and Anthology, they, they would have had the best thing for us to look at and develop a good, true RFP. Because right now, my position is that the RFP was totally not a good and true RFP. I think that we kept in the Workday when we should have thrown, when Workday should have been thrown out, because it did not have the student financial need. So number seven, can Workday handle the four-week interim session in dual credit? You answered yes. Well, in speaking to the chair, you answered yes, however, apparently, you're too busy with Workday for this to be put into place, and we're losing enrollment because of it. And I don't understand why we, if, if you said yes, why aren't you having somebody in it working for the four-day, for the four-week interim where we could have more enrollment?
So in this case, this module is not live at this point in time. So again, if you go back to our schedule, we would not really be live with the entire system until later this year was the original plan, so.
And why did I get a yes? Then why did I have it answered yes?
So the question was, can Workday handle four-week interim sessions and dual credit? And the answer is yes, if that, those sessions fall within the ICCB semester. So that.
They are, they fall within the semester.
There are some discussions that are happening where there are courses that may go across semesters. So, again, depending on how they are, if they're within the semester, the answer is yes.
The chair says they are all falling, they've made changes to revisions to that so that they fall within the semesters. So I'm asking, why do we have the excuse that we're too busy with Workday to work on enrollment issues?
Okay, so I think what you're saying, when you say too busy on Workday, it's not then a Workday-related issue, then that may be related to the current system.
Well, it's a Workday issue, because if we're too swamped with Workday, and we didn't, we, we don't have enough support from AVAP, and we need enrollment, enrollment's our key issue that we're all here for, why do we not have it implemented? If this is IT-related, why do we not have it implemented? If we're following the ICCB mandated semesters.
We're not live on Workday, so we can't implement this functionality in Workday without implementing the rest of the student system.
So then your answer should have been, if we are, if we go live, you gave me a half-ass answer, I'm sorry, I'm going to say it that way, I'm sorry, half-ass, that's my technology, half.
Not appropriate.
Half-completed, half-completed answer, which to me, you should have said something, not just yes, I would have liked to have known that we weren't ready to go for it because Workday wasn't ready. But that's where I stand on, on number seven. Eight, typical S double A S agreements are five or seven years, with a 10 as an exception in rare cases. Because the duration is so vendor favorable, they typically make concessions in order, concessions in order to secure the long term. I, don't we believe that an annual escalator of 7 to 10% in higher education unless we're on a one-year agreement? We're not on a one-year agreement. Typical escalators are 2 to 4% or less, depending on the duration of the initial term. Why do we go out so long, and then, what are the escalation costs going to be in term, in year 11?
I can speak for, and I think we put an example, again, this was based on looking at what at the time, when, when this was, we were going through this process, if we're going to look at the useful life of the software, that's where the 10 years came from.
Okay, so that's why, even though, when I'm listening and talking to other vendors, they're telling me it should be three to five, no more than seven, we went 10. So the methodology of going 10 was based on your decision or the committee's decision? Who's, who made the decision to go for 10 years?
Based on the information at the, at the bottom of that page, from a Gartner document on the recommended looking at useful life.
Okay, but Gartner is, to me, Gartner to me is not case, is it case management? That we're looking, yeah, case, Campus Works, pardon me, Campus Works, I got to give, there's too many Cs. Campus Works or Farelli, those have been the two experts that I would have gone back to. Why do we not look at talking to them instead of this one?
I can't answer that question. Again, we came in, and I was asked to follow the Gartner recommendations and implement those recommendations.
But if you are the person that's the project manager that's assigned, would you not have brought in Farelli or Campus Works?
That would not have been my job to bring in.
Would it have been Jim's? Or would it have been the committee's? Who would have determined?
It was not under consideration at that time.
Okay.
And the reason why we went 10, 10 years is we wanted to fix that cost for as long as we possibly could and negotiate aggressively with Workday, which we did for that 10-year period. We wanted to fix, we wanted cost certainty for the college over a longer period of time.
Okay, number.
An ERP investment, although Gartner's best practice here is 10-year useful life, we were on Alucion for 34 years. So, you know, this investment here for the college is a 20, 25-year investment and commitment, probably at a minimum at this point.
Okay, my question was related to, why do we do 10-year? I didn't want to look back at what we did for Alucion, because I know we were there. So stick specifically to my questions.
So quickly, Vice Chair.
Number 12, you said you've provided it, I want a total breakdown, and I told Dr. Farmer that I want a total cost breakdown of every little integral part of the contracts between campus management and Workday.
Really quickly, I just want to get, gauge the board at this time. I know we have a few questions here that we need to respond to. Are we okay continuing in this format? Yes.
It's her car, she was in a car accident. Yeah, can some, yeah. Can we take a minute and I'll go check on her?
Why don't we take a quick break? She's coming back, okay. I, I would like to make a recommendation, if we could take a five-minute break, Dr. Namuwo, thank you.
Good, Chairman? All right.
Okay, I believe our break time is over, correct, Karen? All right. So Dr. Namuwo and I had the opportunity to follow up with the board, and we want to honor the request of the board to move forward to close this out. And Vice Chair, at this time, we are honoring one more question before I turn this back over to Dr. Namuwo.
Okay. This is in regards to the vote. It appears by stating what was, that it was an informal vote on your last presentation to us, which means it was an inconclusive vote. This appears to be when the rubrics were likely developed. Most public institutions process purposely separate the functional requirement evaluation from the cost evaluation. They select a preferred vendor based on functional fit and commence with price negotiation. This seems to be a very common practice. So my concern comes, if JJC did not contract for student with Workday, then what was the cost considered in the final rubric? Were the fees considered apples to apples? And when was the second rubric developed? Was it the same questions that were asked, and was it prior to the start of the process or this, after the survey results and fees in form were collected on the first? At what stage in the process was the decision rubric developed and by whom? And then who was at JJ, who then was the model from another college, Gartner, another industry consultant? And how were the questions formed and determined to make the rubric?
I'm going to let Jerome respond to the question on the rubric.
So we had the questions, again, we expanded the questions. So we went from the 500-plus to the 1,300. So that's the.
Okay, you're confusing me now, because rubric one had 500 questions, rubric two had 1,300 questions. I'm asking for the rubric one and rubric two.
Okay, rubric.
Because rubric one and rubric two, because based on the point system, from what I understand, that was what determined the cost factor. So rubric one had case, had campus management in first place, rubric two, all of a sudden, had Workday in, in position. That's where the point system came in for the cost evaluation, not for functionality, but for cost. And it was based on the points of rubric two versus rubric one, which showed campus management.
So let's go back, the rubric, so when you say rubric one, the 500 was part of the RFP process when the RFP went out. Rubric, what you call rubric two, the 1,300 points, that was part of the specifications that we sent out to the vendors to basically respond to. So these are two separate things. So when you look at the points, what, and I think I know where you're going here, the 1,300 points was the first scoring. The second piece was then the financial ratios that we had talked about earlier. That was the two that came together with the total points. So that's where the total points came from.
But did rubric one support campus management?
I did not work on, again, if you're saying rubric one were the 500 questions, that was part of the RFP, so that did not go through the same process that I went through with the 1,300, which was inclusive of the 500. They were part of that, so we built upon the 500 to build the 1,350.
So the questions came to both of the vendors?
Both vendors received the exact same questions on the same date and responded as of that specific date when we sent that out.
And campus management did not answer enough, or Workday answered more? I'm trying to understand.
It wasn't about, they, they answered all the questions, it was, again, the, it was very.
Based on points?
Based on, well, they answered the question on, yes, we can do it out of the box, or it's a configuration, or a customization, and if so, how long? And so depending on their answers, then we looked at the weighting that each of the functional areas gave each one of those specifications, and that weighting along with their answer is how the point was created.
But did you base it on functionality, or did you base it on cost?
Specifications were all based, so the specifications are all functionality.
Okay.
The end result was then taking, so while that's going on, negotiations were going through with both vendors to ask them for a 10-year cost. So both vendors were asked to give their best and final offer, and again, that was a process that was going on in parallel as we were grading and scoring that information. Once we received that best and final offer from each vendor, that number is what we then use to divide into the points to come up with the price per point.
But did case manage, or campus management, were they in first position at any time? With the rubrics?
If you think of it as a formula, again, we take all the pieces, and then the formula, as we say, now we divide that price into the, the, the total points, that's where we come up with the end result at that point in time. So if you look at it from a specification perspective, where did they score, then that, that's where you would see, and I think what I presented, you would have seen that one vendor higher than Workday at that time.
Okay.
Just on specifications.
Right, so then I guess my question is, if that was the case, why did we not consider going back and talking to campus management as to costs, if they had the function, functionality, where we know Workday did not have the functionality in the student portion?
I can't speak to that piece of it. I know that there were discussions and negotiations on price going on, because again, I needed that price information to take into account for the, the, the rubric that we had created that essentially was going based on.
So you guys commit, you guys created the rubric, correct? He said we.
When you say.
He said we created the rubric.
The rubric. The rubric, again, the specifications with the ratios, right? And then dividing that into the points, into, I'm sorry, into the cost, that was the process.
So who developed the questions for the rubric?
The questions-
You said we, so let me ask the-
The specifications-
It's specifications.
The specifications were created by the functional team. Each functional area, whether it was procurement, expense team, financial aid, they created their own-
So each area that was on the committee created it?
Yes.
Then, did they get to see the results of this?
Yes. Those results were then sent back out.
I'm done.
Okay.
You said one question. I gave multiple one question.
Thank you, thank you so much, vice chairs. Dr. Namuwa?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Farmer, for the opportunity to kind of wrap us up here. So I wanna highlight just a few things. I think we've heard a lot today, and all of your feedback will inform our path forward. Thankful for the board's support of IVNV. And one thing I failed to mention is Campus Works is famously vendor-agnostic, which has helped them gain quite a reputation in the higher ed industry. You know, the second is, please know that as an administration, we're actively considering many options, just so we're prepared so that when the final report comes out from Campus Works, that we're, we're prepared to create an action, action item that aligns with that recommendation. So short way of saying, I mean, a long way of saying, a lot is gonna ride on IVNV, and it should. In regards to SIS, however, in March, you will have a board action to continue our relationship with Colleague. As a result of postponing the implementation of Workday Phase Two, which we don't need to go into that again, we, we need SIS to continue to operate the way it's operating right now. So be happy to kind of talk to each, each of you individually at some point, but that will be a board action item. That's, in, in regards to all of the actions, or all of the options, rather, that I referenced earlier, all of those options include a working SIS, and currently, Colleague is our vendor for that.
Will you be going back to talk to Workday about paying for that, since we are forced to do that? Because that is a consideration that I think this board should be looking at to look at. Workday will pay that because we didn't force, force the situation. It's the problem with the fact that you're not fully implemented with Workday in the, in the SIS area.
Sure. So I would offer that, based on my conversations with Workday, they're open to concessions. I think anything further, we'd most likely have to take into closed session under two C1. Okay. All right. Dr. Farmer, thank you. Hand it back over to Jim.
I just wanna thank Jim and Jerome for standing here and responding to all the questions. I know it was not an easy task, but we do appreciate you doing that today. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Thank you, Dr. Namuwa. Thank you, board of trustees. We, we know these are hard conversations. We are with you on, on the frustrations around the extension and the consideration of other go-forward strategies. So we wanna be, and we are very much empathetic to all of your perspectives. I think, you know, our focus is to make sure that we can serve our students first and foremost, in the best possible way that we can. A lot of us here at the college do that in a very indirect fashion, but we know that everything we do here is to serve our students, and we're gonna continue to keep our focus there as we go forward. So I appreciate the time tonight. I know it's been a long night, and I'm ready to go home. Thanks.
Thank you.
We have a motion?
I'm moved. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.